We are here today to listen to candidates who wish to represent us as the next mayor of Chicago. But more importantly, we are here to build a relationship with the next mayor of Chicago. Welcome. Welcome to the New Chicago 2011 Mayorial Candidate Forum. New Chicago 2011 is a coalition of over 26 community organizations in Chicago. We are here today to listen to candidates who wish to represent us as the next mayor of Chicago. But more importantly, we are here to build a relationship with the next mayor of Chicago. New Chicago 2011 is a multi-racial, multi-ethnic, multi-issue group, and tonight, we have a capacity crowd of 2,900 grassroots leaders who are members of our diverse citywide base: African-American, Latino, Asian, and white residents, united for a fair, progressive Chicago.
The format of this town hall will be: The candidates will be allowed to make a maximum two-minute opening statement. And while candidates are seated alphabetically, we held a draw to determine the order of the opening statements. We will then have 90-second testimonies and 30-second questions on five issue areas, and rotating the candidates who answer the questions first. Each candidate will also answer one question out of a Cubs hat. Oh, okay. They're both Chicago. And during the course of the evening, and due to the size of the audience, unfortunately, we're not going to be able to take questions from the floor. There'll be no literature handed out by the candidates, but in the foyer, there are tables provided for the candidates to use, so you can check those on your way out.
Ground rules. Only candidates who filed with at least 35,000 signatures were invited to attend. Of those seven who qualified, six will be joining us tonight. Gary Chico will have to leave about 7:15 PM. Danny Davis, James Meeks, Miguel De Valle, Carol Mosley Braun, and Felicia Watkins will be here throughout the rest of the evening. I'm sorry, Patricia Watkins, my apologies. And Rami Manuwa refused to attend. Sitting in the front row is representatives of ONE. They will have signs indicating 30 seconds, 10 seconds, and time up, at which point your microphones will be turned off. We ask candidates for respect and to not go over their time limit. We also ask our audience for respect for themselves and the candidates throughout the night. But before I begin, I've been rehearsing something with our crowd on this evening. So I have a question for you. Who are we?
New Chicago 2011!
That was just our warm-up. Who are we?
New Chicago 2011!
Oh, we're about to bring it home this time. Who are we?
New Chicago 2011!
Let the forum begin. Ambassador Braun, you have two minutes for your opening statement.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much to New Chicago 2011 for hosting this forum, and for all of you for being here tonight and inviting me to participate. Thank you. I love you too. You know, my mother used to tell me that the best predictor of what somebody was going to do was what they had already done. The best predictor of future action is past results. I have been called a pioneer in my time in public service. I've devoted my life to public service. I marched with Dr. King when I was barely 14 years old. I broke the glass ceiling for women in the law. I was Mayor Harold Washington's floor leader in Springfield. I reformed the Recorder of Deeds office. I was elected to the United States Senate, one of two African-Americans in the entire 20th century, and I served there for six years as the only African-American. I was the first woman in history to serve on the Senate Finance Committee, and from that position, I was able to bring over a billion dollars in funding for infrastructure back home to Illinois. I have stood from the beginning and consistently for LGBT rights, for choice, for women, against the death penalty, against apartheid in South Africa, for pension equity for women, for jobs for neighborhoods, and I launched the Crumbling Schools Initiative from my office. I have won in every ward in the city of Chicago in every election in which I have run. I filed the most petitions because I want to be your mayor. I want to create jobs in the neighborhood, quality education in the neighborhoods, safety in the neighborhoods, and have open government in which people are told the truth about what is really going on. I'm prepared to be accountable, are you? I'm prepared to be accountable. Let's make this city work for everybody in all of the neighborhoods of Chicago.
Thank you, Ambassador Braun. And now, Clerk De Valle, you have two minutes for your opening statement.
New Chicago 2011. You're all wearing different colored t-shirts with different names on it, but you're all here for the same reason, and that is because you want a better city made up of strong neighborhoods. And so, I thought, as I came in, I thought of where I was when I was a little guy in Chicago, when there was not a single soul who could speak English to me, because I only spoke Spanish. And then after that, I went on to work with several community organizations, and did my first organizing in high school, and have been organizing ever since, because I know how important it is to empower the people in the neighborhood to take the kinds of actions that are going to affect social change in our communities, and ensure strong institutions, strong schools, strong businesses, jobs for people. That's what Chicago is all about. And the New Chicago 2011 is going to be very different from the old Chicago, because it is a new day, and you are going to chart a new course in this election. You will do it. The people who are not here today are not going to do it. They don't want to chart a new course. That is why they're not here today. Everyone in this room tonight understands the historical significance of this election, and everyone in this room understands that the future development of the city has to be an agenda that is a neighborhood's agenda, not a downtown agenda, not a big business agenda, but a neighborhood's agenda. And that's what will happen in the city of Chicago. I am a citywide elected official. I know how to get elected in the city of Chicago, but I understand that it's the voters who have the final say. And I will put my future in your hands, because when I'm elected mayor, I know that I will be a true partner in setting an agenda that is going to change things in the city of
Reverend James Meeks, you have two minutes for your opening statement.
Thank you so much, and thank you to all of you who represent our neighborhood's New Chicago. Let me say that I am State Senator James Meeks, and for the last eight years, I have been the leading advocate in the school funding fight to make schools equitable across the state of Illinois. I have tried everything imaginable to make our schools better, even taking students to Winnetka to protest the fact that if they have good schools in Winnetka, we ought to have good schools in Chicago. Chicago deserves the best. I have stood with you in saying that downtown TIF money, the definition of a TIF is for a blighted community, and we should not take TIF money and continue to redevelop areas that don't need to be developed anymore. We should take that money and develop our neighborhoods. Now, I'm so excited about the name of this group, New Chicago. If you want a new Chicago, you cannot elect the same old people, because the same old people are going to do the same old thing. The definition of insanity is to elect the same old people and to think that you're going to get a different result. And so, I'm here tonight to say to you, let's change Chicago, let's make Chicago better, and let's get ready to start with a new Chicago, starting tonight.
Thank you, Reverend Meeks. Mr. Chico, you have two minutes for your opening statement.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening. My name's Gary Chico, and I'm very pleased to be with you tonight, and I'm a candidate who wants to work with you. That's why I came here tonight. I don't believe in ducking debates. I think it's important that if we're going to work together, we be together. I want to hear what you have to say as well. My story is one from the southwest side of Chicago, back of the yards McKinley Park. My grandfather came here from Mexico, and those are my roots, and I'm proud to be a Chicagoan. Very proud to be a Chicagoan. I have answered the call when my city has asked me, whether it's been serving as the chief of staff, the president of the Chicago schools. I've worked with many of the community organizations whose very flags we look at this evening. It's been my privilege to work alongside of you. I believe that our best days are ahead of us. We're only going to do it together. As Senator Meeks said, it's time that we take what we see downtown and put it in our neighborhoods. We need to make our neighborhoods as strong as they've ever been, and it begins with education. Our students, our children, just like my children went to public school, are entitled to the best schools that we can possibly produce, because that is what's going to spell the difference in a world-class city, when we all feel like we're part of the same city, when we are all working toward the same objectives, when we all feel we can get jobs. My first priority as mayor is going to be to build jobs in our neighborhoods. Jobs in our neighborhoods. I'm going to take the city colleges, and we're going to take that job training program and make it a job placement program with people in the neighborhoods. We're not going to have to worry anymore about whether we can get a job, because we're going to bring companies to our neighborhoods and get our people employed. And I very much look forward to working with each and every one of you. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Mr. Chico. And now Reverend Watkins, you have two minutes for your opening statement.
Thank you. Thank you. Hello, New Chicago 2011? How many know, the only way we're going to have a New Chicago is if we make it. We got to make it happen. Nobody's going to give it to us. We've heard the rhetoric of the politicians in the past, and we've heard nothing new here today, but some of the same things we've heard in the past. My name is Patricia, Dr. Patricia Van Pelt Watkins, and I've dedicated my life to improving the lives of families in Chicago and empowering people to take charge of their own communities. I was raised in Cabrini-Green by a mother who just wouldn't give up. She had seven children, and she was a civil rights activist, and she taught me something. She said, "Justice ain't gonna come, you got to go and get it. You have to fight for justice." And you know what? She taught me that, you know, just listening to rhetoric is not enough. We need to see what people have done and how they've done it. And I want you to know, I've worked alongside of many of you in your struggle for immigration reform. I've marched with you. I sent people to Phoenix, Arizona. I've stood by your side for criminal justice reform, for public safety funding in Chicago, in Springfield, and also in Washington, DC. And I've done more, just as many of you have done, done more as an organizer than any politician that we know. As organizers, we've done more, because we have fought, and we have not just fought, but we said, we know what we want, we know the kind of change we must have, and we have demanded it, and we have seen it come into fruition. Now, when I was in Cabrini-Green, my mom fought. She said, "Look, you know what? We got to get out of this city, this area. We got to get to better housing." And I didn't know anything was wrong with the housing I had. But once she moved us to the south side and I started going to Finger High School, I realized that it was better on the south side than it was in Cabrini-Green. Listen, we have to unite ourselves and fix the culture of Chicago, because Chicago is broke, the value system is off, and the only way we're going to get change is if we demand it and we say, we're going to have exactly what we want.
Congressman Danny Davis, you have two minutes for your opening statement.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You know, I believe that a people united would never be defeated, and so I want to commend all of the groups and organizations for putting this forum together. As a matter of fact, tonight, I ask all of my colleagues who are running to make a pledge that we will have 10 regional debates throughout the city of Chicago in 10 different neighborhoods so that we can seriously discuss and debate the issues confronting the city, so that you can know what each candidate really stands for. I have worked alongside many of the groups in this room. We've fought for a livable wage. We've fought for low-income energy assistance. We've fought for immigration rights. We've fought for good schools, for affordable housing. We've fought to include all of the people in Chicago so that it can become one city, one Chicago, where everybody makes a difference, everybody is included, everybody is in, nobody out. That's what a Danny Davis candidacy represents. That's what a Danny Davis mayoralty will represent. Danny Davis will represent all of the people in Chicago equally, fairly, and across the board. Thank you so much again. It's a pleasure to be here.
As a New Chicago, united across geography, religion, and race, we ask our leaders onstage to announce their organization and communities to the audience.
I am Southsiders Organized for Unity and Liberation, SOUL, and we are here 100-strong, united for a New Chicago.
I am Erie Neighborhood House, and we are here 150-strong, united for a New Chicago.
I am from the Jane Addams Senior Caucus, and we are here 75-strong, united for a
I am Brighton Park Neighborhood Council, and we are 100-plus strong for New Chicago
I am Illinois Hunger Coalition, and we are here over 100-strong, united for a New Chicago.
Hello, I am Logan Square Neighborhood Association, and we are here 120-strong, united for a New Chicago.
Hello, I am here Southwest Youth Collaborative, 100-strong, united for a New Chicago.
I am Chicago A.D., and we are here united for what? New Chicago 2011.
I am Center for New Horizon, and we are here 100-strong for a New Chicago.
I am Lakeview Action Coalition, we are here 110-strong, united for a New Chicago.
I am Jewish Council on Urban Affairs, we are 125-strong, united for a New Chicago.
I'm Access Living, we are 30-strong and united for a New Chicago.
I am with the Kenwood Oakland Community Organization, KOCOS in the house, united, 100-strong for a New Chicago 2011.
I am Magic, we are 50-strong, and we are united for a New Chicago.
I am here for Metropolitan Tenant Organization, and we are 75-strong, united for a New Chicago.
I am Community Renewal Society, and we are here 100-strong, united for a New Chicago.
I am Southwest Organizing Project, and we are here 115-strong, united for a New
I am Action Now, and we are here over 100-strong, united for a New Chicago.
I am Movement Reimagining Change, and we are here 110-strong, united for a New
I'm here for Bicatay, we are 110, you can hear that, strong, united for a New
I am ONE, 100-strong, united for a New Chicago.
I am Coffee Power Pack, we are here 100-strong people for a New Chicago.
I am Albany Park Neighborhood Council, and we are here 50-strong, united for New Chicago.
I am Korean American Resource and Cultural Center, Kelly, we are here 80-strong, united for a New Chicago.
Yo soy el enlace Chicago, somos 100 personas fuertes y unidas para un nuevo Chicago.
I am the Illinois Coalition for Immigrant Refugee Rights, and we are here 100 people strong, united for a New Chicago.
I am Chicago Coalition for the Homeless, we are here 130-strong for a New Chicago.
Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you. Now, for the issue of violence prevention, presenting testimony is Jesse Belton from the Southwest Youth Collaborative. And presenting our candidate question is Lynn Morton of Kofi Power Pack.
On October 19th, 2010, one of our youth showed up at our youth center, but unfortunately, we had to turn him around at the door because we were closed that day due to a lack of staff. An hour later, he was hit over the head with a two-by-four, which split his forehead down the middle due to an altercation with some other youth. He ended up receiving 17 stitches and was forced to move out of town because of the fear that grew in his grandmother's heart of seeing her grandson go to the emergency room and endure so much pain. This could have easily been avoided if we had more youth centers like ours opening in our communities, also more jobs to keep our youth occupied and off the streets. Without these proper resources instilled in our communities, it leaves our youth with two options: duck the violence or join the violence. And from my experience of being in emancipated youth in this city, when you are forced to adapt to an environment with a failing educational system on top of a lack of resources, your only alternative is to commit crime to survive. And sadly, the consequence for that is imprisonment or death.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lynn Morton. I am co-chair emeritus of Power Pack, Parents Organized to Win Educate and Renew Policy Action Council. Candidates, how will you engage young people around violence and address the needs for jobs for youth?
Thank you very much. Clerk De Valle, you have one minute to answer.
Well, we need a youth employment program, a year-round, in-school youth employment program. I was a beneficiary of that when the federal government provided that support under the old Neighborhood Youth Corps program. We need a Chicago Youth Corps program, and we need all these big businesses downtown and all our local manufacturers and our small businesses to provide job opportunities for our youth and to work with our schools to make sure that the youth are developing the skills they need in order to fill those jobs, like the Austin Polytech School is doing, providing opportunities for youth to develop the skills that make them marketable. It takes a citywide office to do that, and it takes a state and a federal government to support the efforts of a citywide office to do that. We need to partner with community-based organizations to serve as the-
Thank you, Clerk De Valle. Ambassador Braun, you have one minute to answer.
Education, jobs, community involvement, strengthening our neighborhoods so young people have a place to work. An idle mind really is the devil's workshop, and unless you provide jobs and places for young people to go, they're going to be hanging out and having, running into difficulties. I was in the Senate, I sponsored midnight basketball, and it wasn't about playing basketball. It was about putting young people in a safe environment, engaging the community with them, so that the men in the community could help mentor the boys. I think that is a major thing that we have to promote in our communities. As for violence in the neighborhoods, I was mugged myself, and so nobody cares more about this issue and making our streets safe than I do. But I think you do it by empowering communities to fight crime. It's not just a top-down, it's got to be a bottom-up process as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ambassador Braun. Reverend Meeks, you have one minute to answer.
What we need in our schools is vocational training. Everybody is not going to go to college. And what our schools are making a mistake is we're trying to prepare everybody for college as if everybody is college material. We need more young people to come out of high school, ready to step in jobs. And then, for the young people who are committing crimes, who are already dropped out of high school, we need to build bridges and pathways. We need pathways to GED, pathways to job training, and pathways back to productivity in society.
Thank you, Reverend Meeks. Mr. Chico, you have one minute to answer.
As mayor, I would have two initial priorities. Number one, fix our schools. We've lost our way, we've lost our momentum. The schools are not working to produce the graduates that companies want to hire, and we have to fix that, and we have to fix it pronto. I put out a comprehensive education plan to make our youth employable. As Senator Meeks said again, not everybody's going to- As Senator Meeks said again, not everybody's going to college, they have to be ready to hit the ground day one. The other priority in my administration, well, get this, create the Office of Jobs. Let's not complicate it with fancy names, let's say what we're about. Let's get companies to move into our city, into our neighborhoods, and employ people. I've done that in my own career, in my own law firm, I hire people. I have 35 people today who I've hired, and that's the proudest thing I have going for me right now, is these people that I give a job to, including people from all of the neighborhoods of the city. Very, very proud of that, let's be simple, let's be direct, let's be effective.
Thank you, Mr. Chico. Reverend Watkins, you have one minute to answer.
All right, there, to get jobs in our communities, we've been fighting and marching for years. I've marched down in Springfield with you, down to City Hall with you, trying to get jobs. The story that these politicians are telling you are exactly what we hear over and over and over again, yet we don't have jobs. Let's face the fact, let's not be lost in the rhetoric. You know what, we got to find new ways to fund youth jobs, and I wanted to suggest a program called Social Impact Bonds, where investors come in and put money in, social entrepreneurs and venture philanthropists put money in to solve a social problem, and they get their money back when that social problem is erased. That's going to get us some jobs, that's going to turn things around. We have to turn things around and not get lost by people saying, "I'm going to give you this, I'm going to give you that, everything's going to work out, go home and eat a turkey, and it's going to be fine." It's not going to be fine, we got to fight for what we know we must have, and they need to stop telling us lies, thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Watkins. Congressman Davis, you have one minute to answer.
I agree that everybody needs a job and everybody need to work, but we also need to teach ourselves alternative methods of conflict resolution. I have introduced anti-bullying legislation, I have worked with ceasefire, I have worked with Chicago Youth Centers, I've worked with churches and other faith institutions, I've unveiled a program where local churches, in partnership with the city of Chicago, will become refuges for young people to come in, be engaged, be involved, and learn alternative methods of conflict resolution so that violence does not continue to permeate their lives.
Okay, and from our hat, which is a bear's hat, I understand, this question is for Clerk DeValle. What is your position on expanding public transportation options, particularly on the far south side with the red line extension and the southeast side, and implementing the gold line? You have one minute.
Well, obviously, more dollars are needed. We have in the state of Illinois an unfair funding formula for transportation dollars. We have downstate receiving a lot of the transportation dollars, given that they have less of a population than the Chicago metropolitan area. The formula that's in place now is unfair. There's been a reluctance in Springfield to change that formula. We have to be able to acquire more of those resources, and at the same time, we've got to do an analysis of our lines and see what the utilization rate is and see how we can shift from a third shift to a second shift or a first shift in terms of increasing transportation for different parts of the city that are underserved at this time. There is an unfairness in the distribution of the lines, and that has to be resolved through working with the CTA and Metro and PACE.
This question is only for Mr. Chico. How will you address food deserts while creating living wage jobs, and you have one minute?
The problem of the food deserts is nothing new, we have to work triple overtime to bring grocery stores into our city. We have to use whatever incentives that are available for the city to lure companies in to go to places where they haven't gone before. When we do that, whether it's Walmart, whether it's any of these organizations that want to come in to some areas where people don't have fresh produce, we have to be cognizant of that. Let me tell you this, this past Saturday, I was in Logan Square. There was a farmer's market in Logan Square, and I talked to those folks about going into other neighborhoods where they could produce their fresh produce, vegetables, and meats for people. That provides jobs for people as well. We have to be creative and nimble if we're going to get people to go into our neighborhoods and offer jobs and fresh food for people. I'll work very hard to do that because it's absolutely required. It's horrendous that in this day and age, we can travel down host streets for miles and not see one quality grocery offering. It can be done.
For the issue of human rights, presenting testimony is Cindy Augustine from the Illinois Coalition for Immigrant and Refugee Rights. And presenting our candidate question is Hatim Abudaya, Executive Director of the Arab American Action Network and member of the Coalition of African, Arab, Asian, European, and Latino immigrants of Illinois.
My name is Cindy, I am 21 years old, I am in my fourth year at the University of Chicago, and I am undocumented. 18 years ago, my parents made the decision to move to the United States in hopes of a better future for our family. For the last 18 years, we have made our lives in the back-of-the-yards neighborhood. My parents have worked hard jobs as housekeepers and delivering merchandise to provide our family with the basics. I'm about to reach the date of my college graduation in June, but I'm uncertain about my future. My dream is to be an elementary school teacher, to help my family and to give back to my community, but I am afraid of the uncertainty that exists. I am afraid of one day coming home and not knowing if I'll ever see my family again. It's this fear that makes me fight for the rights of my family, my friends, and my community. I want to thank the thousands of you who are already fighting hard for my dreams. Before we proceed to the candidates, I want to ask you for one more thing. I want to ask you to please call Senator Mark Kirk this week, please take out your phones. Program this toll-free number into your phone, 866-996-5161, please keep calling. I want my legislators, including my future mayor, to see my family and myself as people who have dreams, hope, and a future, and not see us just for our immigration status, thank you.
My name is Hatim Abudaya, I'm the Executive Director of the Arab American Action Network and the Board Vice President of the Coalition of African, Arab, Asian, European, Latino immigrants of Illinois. Candidates, what will you do to address the needs of immigrants and refugees in Chicago?
Ambassador Braun, you have one minute to answer.
Thank you. On the day that I filed my petitions, and we filed more petitions than anybody else, I was stopped in the hallway by a woman who said that I had helped her and her daughter come into this country, get their status adjusted, and provided a way, and her daughter to go to school. I very much support and have supported helping people make their way through this hideous process that is our immigration system. It needs to be fixed in every way, and I know the current, the new hotness, if you will, is the Dream Act, but that's only part of the picture. Having been an ambassador and worked with the State Department, I can tell you, we can do better. We can fix this process, it's a national process, but here in Chicago specifically, we can make certain that people who are here are not hunted down, separated from their families, or are otherwise intimidated by the fact of their status as immigrants.
Thank you. Dr. Watkins, you have one minute.
I believe that all of us are equal, and that there's none of us that's illegal, that we're all here legally. I know from my own research that the valuable contributions that immigrants have given to this country, in fact, we have a net increase of jobs as a result of immigrants being here. Nothing is more important than a family unit, keeping our family unit together would be the number one case for me as mayor. I will set up a latter program also that allows new Americans to get general enough education to be able to get a job, to get into employment opportunities, so that they're not held back. We will build community organizing, I will fund community organizing across this city, because I believe when communities are organized, we can solve a lot of our own problems. And also, we're going to demand that ICE stop trolling around in Cook County Jail looking for folks, because we need to keep our families together, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chico, you have one minute to answer the question.
It's way beyond time that we have national immigration reform, way beyond time. My grandfather came to this country looking for a better life from Mexico, and he had no rights at that time whatsoever. In fact, he didn't speak the language at all. People motioned to my grandfather about what to do, and I remember relatives from Mexico coming up, we had to hide them. We had to hide them in our house because they would be picked up by the immigration authorities. It's way beyond time. I told Congressman Gutierrez, I will do whatever it takes, whatever he needs me to do, talk to Mark Kirk, talk to congressmen, and get comprehensive immigration reform passed in the United States of America. That's the only way. We're going to equalize the playing field for people who are here right now, not as full-fledged citizens. I'll work tirelessly as a mayor to make that happen, thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Meeks, you have one minute to answer the question.
Let me say that we need to streamline the process, we need to have comprehensive immigration reform. We all need to work together to make sure that that happens. And let me also say to Gary Chico that the way to eliminate food deserts is to take the TIF money that's in downtown TIFs and put them into neighborhoods in the city of Chicago. There is no need to have $50 million sitting in a TIF somewhere and to have a community like Roseland, Inglewood, or Logan Square without the necessary stores. That's how we fix it, we decide to do it, and we do it.
Thank you. Congressman Davis, you have one minute.
I am a co-sponsor of the Dream Act, just voted for it, have worked for it. I believe strongly in comprehensive immigration reform. America is big enough, wealthy enough, broad enough to be a refuse for people coming from all over the world. Give me your tired, your huddled masses, yearning to breathe free. That is the America, and that is the Chicago that I believe in. I will continue to support comprehensive immigration reform.
Thank you. Clerk DeValle, you have one minute.
I will use this precious minute to remind everyone that the individual who is supposed to sit in this chair is the individual most responsible for blocking immigration reform in the United States. As a congressman, as the chief of staff to the president, and how are we to expect him to protect the rights of immigrants in this city? It won't happen, and people in the neighborhoods are not going to tolerate that one bit. This is a city of immigrants. I worked for Association House, I was the executive director of a community agency that was established by Jane Adams in the late 1800s to help the immigrants of the late 1800s. This city was built by immigrants, and we must have an administration that is immigrant-friendly and that values the contributions that immigrants make in this city, thank you.
Thank you, Clerk DeValle. This question is for Dr. Watkins. Dr. Watkins, what will you do to improve job and transit access for residents with disabilities? You have one minute to answer.
Well, I think in order to improve jobs, we got to remove barriers, that's what I've heard from people with disabilities. They say, "We just want access, we just want to have an opportunity to get a job." So in this city, I want to promote a whole program that removes barriers to employment, not only for disabled people, but for everybody who is locked out of city opportunities and jobs. And I think that in order to deal with the transportation problems, we know our transportation system is crumbling, but we need to make all of the city transportation accessible, and that means we got to call on Washington DC, we got to call on the state, we got to try to call on them to bring in more funds for this city so that we can do what's right. But understand, my heart is in the right place, and I will demand and fight for you to get money here in this city so that we can have decent transportation for all of us, thank you.
This question is for Ambassador Braun. Ambassador Braun, what will you do to fight against foreclosures in Chicago?
Well, to begin with, we need to know who actually owns the property. They've been so busy selling paper to each other, ripping off homeowners, that precipitated a foreclosure crisis that didn't have to happen. And if you want to put that chair back up there for me, yes. You know, when Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac were busy selling the paper that put people into foreclosure that caused the foreclosure crisis that we're having in this city, this gentleman was nowhere to be found doing his job. Now, I believe that if we allow community banks, help community banks to provide a support for homeowners, we have real loan modification programs so that people are not put out of their homes when they lose their jobs. There are concrete steps we can take to keep people in their homes, because after all, homeownership is the American dream, thank you.
For the issue of education, presenting testimony is Takaya Nelson from Action Now. And presenting our candidate question is Beatrice Navarro from Erie House.
Hello, my name is Takaya Nelson from the west side of Chicago, and I am a member of Action Now and the Grow Your Own Teachers Program. I decided to become a teacher because I wanted to make a difference in my community. Educational opportunities are so crucial for young people, especially in low-income communities, because too many are dropping out, going to jail, or falling victim to violence. When I was growing up, I never thought college was an option for me. I don't want to see another generation grow up that way. I want the children in my community to see that there is hope. Our children can succeed if they are given a chance. Right now, the schools in my community have too many students in the classroom, not enough money, and too many learning and behavior-disabled students in each classrooms without additional teachers. We need a community solution for our public schools. To ignore the importance of building relationships of trust in our schools, ignore the importance of teaching and showing children and youth how to build those relationships. In the end, what we want from our graduates is what we want in a mayor, a problem solver, a communicator, and a collaborator.
Good evening, my name is Beatrice Navarro, and I am a parent from Talcoles School and Erie Neighborhood House. Candidates, what is your position on the school closing, turnaround, transformation, and restas?
Ambassador Braun, you have one minute to answer.
Thank you very much. I started the initiative to bring more federal dollars to rebuild our nation's crumbling schools. The federal government gives us only 8% of the cost of elementary and secondary education. We absolutely, positively have to get more federal dollars in here. The state has to step up to the plate and do its part to help fund our schools. On school closing specifically, there has to be community involvement and engagement. I sponsored the first legislation creating the local school councils, we need to use the local-
We need to use the local school councils, have them engaged to help improve the schools. There should be no closures that don't involve the parents and the community. And finally, and finally, you know, I don't mind answering these questions, because I have a long history in education, but quite frankly, I think, Mr. Chico, you need to be responsible for some of the things that went on with the Chicago Public Schools. And you need to be heard in terms of what happened here in this city on the schools. We can do better. Our future depends on it.
Dr. Watkins, you have one minute.
First of all, the reason why we're having so many problems with our schools, number one, we need an educator over the schools. Number two, we need an elected board. We need no more of these appointed boards, but an elected board over our schools. Number three, we need to grow our own teachers, so that our teachers will stand with our students. Number four, we need more parent and student engagement and decision-making, and stop letting a few fat cats in the back room make decisions for all of us. We spend more on education than any other country in the world except Luxembourg, and yet our kids are failing. Why is that? Because we have not been at the table when they make the decisions about what happens to our children. As mayor, I will commit to establishing community councils across the city that will make the decision about what schools close, if any, which I think no schools need to close. I think we can turn our schools around right from, the community can turn schools around right from the inside out.
Mr. Chico, you have one minute.
Hold on, hold on. Give somebody a chance. Carol, long before I was there, you were there. And let me tell you something. Let me tell you something. In 1995, the Illinois General Assembly said our schools were in crisis, long before I got there. And by the time I left in 2001, we were on the upswing. We had pride. People were inspired. I built 65 new schools. I didn't close schools. We built them. And when I was at the Chicago Public Schools, we hired some of the best teachers we ever hired in our history. I led the way to the University of Illinois to get those teachers to come teach in our schools. I kept schools open longer and through the year. I'm proud of my record in the Chicago Public Schools. It's easy to get up here and throw shots, but Carol, as long as we're being truthful, why don't you tell them who gave you the bill to open those schools? I did. And I'm happy to talk about that.
Who are we? And as New Chicago 2011, we agreed to be respectful as the audience and as candidates, and we'd like to say thank you again for adhering to the rules. Senator Meeks, you have one minute.
I sponsored, what are you going to do about closing schools or turning around schools? I sponsored a bill this year in Springfield to take the schools away from Mayor Daley, because he was not doing a good job at running our schools. I don't think we need to turn a school around. I think we need to turn the whole system around, because the entire system is broken, and the entire system is not working. Why isn't that every school is in a magnet school? I think that every school should work. Every school should have equal funds. Every school should have good teachers. And we shouldn't rest until every school in the city of Chicago is providing a high-quality education. So let's not turn one school around.
Congressman Davis, you have one minute.
I don't believe that closing schools will necessarily improve reading, writing, and arithmetic. I think the whole system does in fact need to be revamped. We need an elected school board. We need a top-flight education administrator as the superintendent of schools. We need to improve teacher training, so that teachers better understand how to teach. And we also need to make sure that we change the formula in the state of education for funding public schools. Our schools are actually scandalous. The dropout rate is almost 50%. Kids graduate and can't read and write. We need to throw the whole system upside down and make it work.
Clerk DeValle, you have one minute.
You're hearing a lot of things tonight, but I think it's important that everyone, at some point, look at the history. We have individuals here tonight with selective memory. We have individuals here tonight, we have individuals here tonight who pretty much agree. You know, I'm up here saying, "All of the above." We need to be all of the above. But the bottom line is, we can't continue to set up a parallel system of public education in the city of Chicago. That's what we're doing right now. On one track, it's selective enrollment in magnet schools and charter schools. On the other track, it's the neighborhood schools. It's time to focus on neighborhood schools and strengthen those schools, and take low-performing schools and convert them into high-performing schools. And that could be done without closing schools. But we need quality teachers in each of those schools, and we need a strong lead.
For the issue of jobs, presenting testimony is Sira Isidoro from the Illinois Hunger Coalition. And presenting our candidate question is Amandilo Kuzan from the Center for New Horizons.
Mi nombre es Sira Isidoro.
Good evening. My name is Sira Isidoro.
Este año, mi familia y yo cumplimos ocho años viviendo en el barrio de las Empacadoras.
This year marks the eighth year my family and I have been living in Back of the Yards.
Les pido que cierren los ojos y hagamos un pequeño viaje imaginario.
I ask that you close your eyes and make a short imaginary trip.
En este momento están en la cocina de mi casa y la voz que escuchan es la voz de mi hija Yaki preguntándome: "Mamá, ¿por qué siempre tenemos el refrigerador vacío y no tenemos que comer?"
At this moment, you are in my kitchen, and the voice you hear is my daughter asking me, "Mom, why is our refrigerator always empty, and why don't we have anything to eat?"
Yo, con un nudo en la garganta y aguantándome las ganas de llorar, le contesto: "Porque el dinero no nos alcanza para comprar comida, por eso está vacío."
With a knot in my throat and holding back tears, I answer, "Because we do not have enough money to buy food. That is why it's always empty."
Para mí, una vida digna es tener el dinero suficiente para comprar comida y tener algo que comer todo el tiempo.
For me, a dignified life is to have sufficient money to buy food and to have something to eat all the time.
Allá pueden abrir los ojos.
You may now open your eyes.
Good evening, Chicago. My name is Amandilo Melika Kuzan. I am a leader with the Centers for New Horizons through a program called the Bronzeville Alliance. And candidates, I would like to ask, what is your position on big-box stores such as Walmart and Target offering their workers a living wage?
Thank you very much. Reverend Meeks, you have one minute to answer.
Thank you so much. Thank you all for inviting me here. This is a part of my closing comments. I have a live TV show in one hour, and I have to get all the way to Aurora. And so, I'm sorry that I can't stay. I told them that I would be leaving at this time. My answer to the question is, I supported Walmart. And I supported Walmart, because in my neighborhood of Roseland, there is a food desert. But I did not support that Walmart until we negotiated with the city of Chicago and with the labor unions, the decent wage that they will now be paying all of their workers in our Walmart that will be in the Roseland community. Thank you so much, everybody, and I love you.
Thank you, Reverend Meeks. Congressman Davis, you have one minute to answer.
I introduced the livable wage ordinance when I was a member of the city council. I introduced the livable wage ordinance when I was on the county board. And I still support livable wages for everybody who work. I opposed the store that's in the neighborhood where I live. I live in the Austin community, and I did not support the Walmart when it came to Austin. And so, I support livable wage for anybody who work. At the end of the week, you ought to have enough money to pay your rent, send your children to school, buy food, shelter, and all of the things that you need. Livable wage is an absolute must.
Thank you, Congressman. Clerk DeValle, you have one minute to answer.
Well, I support a living wage, and I support it for all businesses in the city of Chicago, not just Walmart or any other store like Target. You know, we understand that in order for us to be able to provide for our families, we have to have an income that allows us to provide for the basic necessities. But today, we have in Chicago middle-class individuals who are having a difficult time. The fact of the matter is, it's not just low-income individuals. It's individuals who, at times, seemed all right. They were fine, and all of a sudden, there's a job loss or a layoff. I think it's important for us to look at the city as a whole and see that in neighborhoods throughout the city, there are opportunities for job creation, and we have opportunities through our small businesses. But in Chicago, we have an oppressive climate when it comes to small business development. And what...
Thank you, Clerk DeValle. Ambassador Braun, you have one minute to answer.
I believe we have to cut the red tape and roll out the red carpet for job creation in the neighborhoods. I believe that that means that we want to have good-paying jobs, livable wage jobs, in the communities where people live, so people can live and work where they, they can work where they live. Job creation is going to require concerted effort. We're going to have to get the banks involved, because quite frankly, they have CRA, Community Reinvestment Act obligations that have not been filled. We get the money into supporting businesses that want to locate in the communities, provide our people with jobs. As for Walmart and Target specifically, they're sitting all around the border, and people go outside of Chicago to shop there. We need to make certain that there are incentives for people to shop here at home, in Chicago where we live. Thank you.
Thank you, Ambassador Braun. Dr. Watkins, you have one minute to answer.
Thank you. Well, just cut it to the point. I am definitely in support of living wage jobs. This is a world-class city, and I think no big-box, small-box, or tiny-box should come in this city without providing living wage jobs. But let's deal with something that's bigger. We are, Chicago is the third-largest rail hub in the nation. We have more trains and freights coming through this city than anybody else, yet we've ignored it as a source of income for us in a good way. We can unite these railroad owners and the short-rail owners and bring them together to provide more opportunities for our people and more jobs for our people, and those jobs will pay a real wage. It's not, we're not talking about $10-hour jobs. We're talking about $25 and $35-an-hour jobs. That's the kind of jobs I'm talking about. And we can have those, and we can give our rail hub owners incentives to grow, instead of trying to attract new businesses. They're sitting right there. Let's get that money. Thank you.
This next question is for Congressman Davis. Congressman, what are your views on unionizing charter schools and on programs like Grow Your Own?
I think that organized labor, that is, the creation of labor unions, has done more to create what we call a middle class in the United States of America than anything else besides public education. I am in favor of organizing any entity that exists, whether it's a charter school, whether it's a charter church, whether it's a charter bakery, whatever it is. I think that workers need to be organized in order to get the protection that they need for security and to do the best work.
Thank you, Congressman Davis. For the final issue of housing, presenting testimony is Deborah Guerin from Bickerdyke. And presenting our final candidate question is Stephanie Hooker from the Chicago Coalition for the Homeless.
Hello, everyone. My name is Deborah Guerin, and I'm going to briefly share with you what affordable housing has done for my family and I. For over five years, my husband and I lived in a home with my mom, brothers, sister, and her two children. Even though we were both working at the time, we still could not afford to live on our own. All of that changed a year ago, when my husband and I moved into Rosa Parks Apartments, built by Bickerdyke Redevelopment Corporation and the Humboldt Park Community. In February, I became ill with diabetes. I had to take a sick leave and eventually had to leave my job. Because our apartment is affordable, we are able to continue to have a nice place to live. We feel secure. It's not like it's here today and gone tomorrow. Since moving into our new apartment, my husband and I have become active within resident activities with Bickerdyke, as well as working with our local elected officials. Development like these bring a community up. My situation is not unique. There are many families living the same way we were, doubling and tripling up in one home because of these economic times, and there's just not enough affordable housing. So today, I want you to know how important it is to have affordable housing, how crucial it is for the city of Chicago to fund affordable housing, so that other families can have the same opportunity that I had.
Hello. My name is Stephanie Hooker, and I am a leader and board member of the Chicago Coalition for the Homeless. I too live in affordable housing. The Sweet Home Chicago Ordinance proposes that the city designate 20% total of all the TIF funds collected in one year every year to be used to develop affordable housing and to rehab foreclosed properties. Candidates, what are your views on the Sweet Home Chicago Ordinance?
Congressman Davis, you have one minute.
I want to commend Alderman Walter Burnett and all of the cosponsors of this ordinance. One of the great needs that we have in Chicago is the need for affordable housing, which means that every time we build new housing, we should balance what is called upscale housing with affordable housing. I'm in favor of it. It's a good piece of legislation. And again, I commend Alderman Walter Burnett and the other members of the city council that he was able to get to co-sponsor the ordinance.
Clerk DeValle, you have one minute.
I support the original ordinance of Sweet Home Chicago, not the compromise that is being proposed now that dilutes the goal. 20% is 20%, and it should remain 20%. I have worked, over the years, I have worked with Bickerdyke as a community organizer and as an executive director of community-based organizations, and then as a legislator, I fought in Springfield to ensure opportunities for affordable housing. I continue to do the same. My record is consistent. We must continue to fight with the city council, because right now, they're going in the wrong direction. We must go back to the original ordinance, and it must be passed.
Thank you. And now, Ambassador Braun, you have one minute.
I support the legislation, but let me say... But let me suggest this. Affordable housing provides us all with an opportunity if we're just a little bit creative. We can green this city by doing, using money to construct energy-efficient housing, both low-income housing as well as the high-rise. We can begin to, to, to reduce our energy dependence by retrofitting housings, houses in a way with the affordable housing initiative that the city ought to embrace. To say 20% of the TIF funds, think about it. TIF was supposed to have been for housing development to begin with. All of it. But, so, we really do have to reform that program so that we can have the supportive neighborhoods. This is really what we're talking about, supportive neighborhoods and the affordable housing in those neighborhoods. Because you can't have strong communities if people can't afford to live there, if houses are boarded up. We have to come together and...
Thank you. And now, Dr. Watkins.
As I said earlier, I grew up in Cabrini-Green, so I know what affordable housing means. And on top of it, I had Section 8 for years. You know, I'm a certified public accountant now. I have a PhD in management. But none of that could have happened. None of that could have happened if I didn't have decent and affordable housing. Now, I do support Sweet Home Chicago. And we've been a part of that whole process from the beginning. So definitely on board with that. But the problem with affordable housing here in Chicago, affordable housing is not affordable. See? That's why, that's why I developed 42 units of housing on the south and west side for parent, for families, homeless families and families that are near homelessness. Because I realized that if we don't unite ourselves together and make this housing fair and affordable, we, I mean, none of us gonna have no place to live. We have to work together. We have to believe in ourselves. And we have to begin to demand that these politicians give us what we supposed to have. The city should reflect the ideas and the vision of the people. And I stand for that. Thank you.
If we could just stand still for a moment and let us give all of our candidates a warm round of applause. Oh, come on. You can do better than that. They took time out of their day. We just want to say, on behalf of New Chicago 2011, thank you for helping to build a solid relationship between grassroots organizations and yourselves. We encourage all of our members of the Assembly to follow this race closely and to vote your conscience. But before I dismiss you, I have a question. Who are we? Listen, when they leave here, they're gonna be thinking about our energy. I need you to stop for a second, and I need for us to send them out here on the way they came in. Who are we? One more time, who are we? I hereby call this forum a close. Travel safely. You are adjourned.